Hi everybody, welcome to the public work session for July 16th, 2020. Hope everybody's doing well. I'd like to ask for a motion to retire to the public portion of the meeting and convene an executive session for purposes of discussing litigation currently pending, for discussing the appointment of particular individuals for summer positions and for discussing particular IEPs of students.
Still moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
No.
Who in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you. We're going to retire to executive session. We will be reconvening in public around 7:00 PM.
Hi everybody, welcome back. We're just coming back from executive session to the July sixteenth public work session for the Board of Education. Hope everyone is doing well. We are hoping to be back together very soon. I know we've said that for three or four months running now so we will have our superintendent address some future plans in a bit. I would like to welcome, we have a special guest joining us tonight, Carol Rossetto, our athletic director is joining us. Later on in the meeting, we're going to review stage two of a policy we've been working on as a board. So thank you for joining us, Carol. Tonight's a public work session so there's no opportunity for visitors but any questions that had come in about the policy, if there are any, Jackie will help us get through when we get to that portion of the meeting. And any of your questions that had come in that we are able to incorporate in conversation tonight, we will definitely do that as well. You'll notice that tonight the meeting agenda is slightly different. We added a couple of things and worked some things around a bit so I am going to shortly turn it over to our superintendent. And just you'll see further down in the agenda, we now will have committee reports of our four operational areas where board members will report information that's coming from meetings we're having. Committees of the board that were assigned during the reorganizational meeting early in July have board representatives that sit on all of these operational committees with one of our assistant superintendents or district clerk. So we're going to have a new format going forward. clerk. So, we're going to have a new format going forward, and I think that we're going to be working more efficiently this way through committees. We're happy to have some positive changes here. And again, we'd like to welcome our superintendent, Mr. Jun Chang. So, I'm going to turn it over to him and let him go into his report.
Thank you, Madam President. As we, you know, continue to work, one of the things that I want to be able to report out is the messaging that went out today about our reopening process. It's taken a lot of work, and I want to start off by saying thank you to all the volunteers, that's including the teachers, the parents, the administrative staff, certainly the assistant superintendents, as well as our district staff and our district clerk as well, and without a doubt, our board members who are, I know, stretched very thin over some of our subcommittees as well. So, what we did was, we wanted to ensure that there was clear operational procedures of collecting information, gathering information, talking about specific areas to be able to kind of focus and concentrate on, and bring those back to a more smaller committee to start making coordination and logistical decisions as we move forward into planning for reopening. Now, as the state has kind of required us to kind of think about a model of what it looks like when we return, as well as a model of what it looks like if we were to be fully remote, and also a model in terms of if we were to come back and to be to go back out, there's a lot of different scenarios that we needed to kind of think about, and they've given us some interim guidance just this week. And also, today, we were given some guidance that we haven't, I'm pretty sure all of us have not had a chance to comb through. It's 100, 140-plus document about guidelines for reopening the New York State schools. So, we'll be working through that as well. But going back to the idea of our organizational structure of committees, the board committees then are broken down into four subcommittees that are focused on the four areas that I spoke about before. The Safety Committee, the Instructional Committee, the Social, Emotional, and Mental Health Committee, and Co-Curricular Activities Committee as well. Each one of those committees has over 20 members, some up to 30. The way we organized and got the members together was we looked at all the important key people that are our staff members that needed to be in the committee because they are on the ground working, and their insight was going to be extremely instrumental. Additionally, the historic knowledge of the board and some of the constituents they all represent, as well as reaching out to the PTA and working in conjunction with them to find parent volunteers to come on and to serve on some of these committees. It's, we've been working extremely hard in a short amount of time, organizing that many people. I mean, you're talking about 40, you're talking about four committees with certainly over, you know, 20 people each. Organizing everyone and timing and coordination takes a lot of time, but we somehow managed to do it. And we've gone through a series of committee meetings, and today, we met as the Board Reopening Committee and talked and discussed about each one of these areas, which with the questions that we've had, direction and recommendations that we should be working towards, and also just to kind of go back and check and vet out and review some of the things that we've already spoken about. If you look back and refer to my letter, I just kind of gave you a brief insight into some of the topics that we are covering in each one of those specific areas. And as we get more detailed and more nuanced to what it looks like in Rockville Center, I'll be sharing that with you as much as I can, to the extent that I can. Know that sometimes I might not be committing to everything and every detail, but the purpose of this is to really kind of make everyone feel plugged into the information that we want to be able to provide. And in that vein, we will be at least putting out information every Thursday from here on out. Additionally, when we think about reopening, we still have to remember that we are under an executive order, and that, you know, we're also kind of in our seats waiting for information to come on whether or not we will be reopening. We are certainly going to comply with the executive orders that are put out there. We're certainly going to comply with the guidelines and the advisement of our local and state health officials, and rely on their expertise in guiding us to put us in the best position for any type of safe reopening or safe environment for our students, whether that be in the classrooms or out of the classrooms. So, that's, those are the things that we're working on, and we'll continue to provide you a lot of that information moving forward. That's a lot. I know I talk really fast. I wonder if I'm talking fast, but, you know, I just think sometimes I may need to slow myself down. But if there are any questions on those parts, we are looking to also have a forum where parents could send in their information, their questions, as well as some of their thoughts they may have for us to be able to consider through the PTA. Again, we're partnering with the PTA. I want to thank them for being able, so gracious, to host us in partnership with us, where there will be myself, an assistant superintendent, as well as principals and faculty that will be part of that to engage in that dialogue back and forth. We hope to be able to provide certainly more information and give more clarity to some of the questions that we don't have all the answers for yet. And I wish I had all of them, and we're going to continue to work through them. But we feel like as information is kind of trickling out, it seems to be this week, we've gotten a lot. I wonder if there'll be more following. And then by the time the 27th, 29th kind of rolls around, we're closer to a decision that may be coming down from the state. So, we should be able to have some more details to be able to share in answering some of those questions moving forward. So, that is my report on reopening. We are really busy with these committees. A lot of people who have been on vacation have been plugging in, again, which I appreciate. We have a slew of meetings that are going to come about next week. The subcommittees are meeting weekly, and I know they're still having conversations even out of those subcommittees. And we will report, be reporting back to the Board Reopening Committee bi-weekly. So, we should have another meeting a week and a half from now with the committees. The great thing about the structure, and I thought that worked really well, is that we were able to get some insights from each individual group, and we were able to kind of talk through what our next steps were. And that's what I kind of, I'm really proud about my group with, is that we're not just stagnant and just talking about things, but we're looking at ways to put information into motion as well as into action. And that makes me feel very good about our situation. I think, I think that is it.
Thank you. And I know we, as the community, appreciate the communication going forward every week. We have meetings kind of spaced out far apart because it's summer, so it's nice to have the forum coming up in a couple of weeks. So, just to be clear, the forum will be virtual. We still are under the executive order of not being able to gather 50 people, over 50 people. So, really, the decision was to host it virtually because we would have to be turning people away. So, I just wanted to be clear about that decision that was made. We're hoping in some near future, we'll be able to have our board meetings in person. The current executive order, I think, allowing us to meet virtually goes up and through August 5th currently. So, it's affecting some of the decisions being made and some of those limitations. But we keep looking at the guidance and figuring that out as well. So, I just wanted to be clear that that forum would not be in person at this time. Does any board members have questions about the forum coming up, or any content that was in the email Mr. Chang sent out to the community today?
No, just thank you.
Yes, thank you. And definitely I want to echo and thank all of the people that are serving on these committees, board members, assistant superintendents, our administrative staff, principals, parents. We know it's been really a big effort on part of everybody, so thank you so much. And I know Mr. Chang's been sitting in on every one of them as well. So, thank you for all of that. If there's no further questions on that, we're going to move on to our committee reports. So, our Finance Committee had met recently. I know Mrs. Dion is going to give us an update on that committee.
I am. Thank you. So, yes, our Finance Committee met for the first time. Our superintendent met with us, as well as Mr. Bartels and John O'Shea and myself. Mostly, we spoke about POs, which is our purchase orders, the process and the approval process. Just a history, about a year and a half ago, we changed our, we raised the threshold for board members signing and approving purchase orders to $3,000. It had been $500 for many years. We decided to raise it. Last year, after an incident came to light, board members began approving every purchase order that was issued. Over the past several months, our accounts payable department has reviewed and expanded and developed procedures, further procedures in purchasing. All purchase orders must now have complete descriptions, and they're entered at our building and department level. There's been a limit placed on all blanket purchase orders, and every purchase order is reviewed by two people in the central office. On a regular basis, Mr. Bartels reviews possible red flags, questions, administrators when reviewing purchase orders. So, the recommendation to the committee was to increase the amount necessary for board approval to $1,000. At this time, not changing the policy. And the committee agreed with that recommendation. Additionally, all purchase orders are entered at the building level and department level electronically, and then printed and signed by board members. The recommendation was made that board members be given access to our finance software so that we, like everyone else, can just electronically approve purchase orders. It cuts, it cuts down on paper. It cuts down on time. It saves my lungs from that NCR paper. So, the committee agreed with that also. So, the recommendations of the committee would be to set the threshold amount needed for board approval of a purchase order to $1,000, and to move forward to allow board members to just electronically approve purchase orders.
Thank you. Any questions from board members regarding that report or any of the recommendations made? How quickly can we get access to that system for our board members, Robert? Is that something that can happen kind of quickly, and we can start doing soon?
Yes, it would, it would happen pretty quickly. We can get two laptops set up with the finance software on it, and board members would have the view-only capability on those disorders, purchase requisitions. So, it's, it's actually a very streamlined process. So, that's pretty much all that they'll see when they open it up. They can do it from home, open it up, tie into their own Wi-Fi, and the information will be restricted. So, it's not, you know, it's not subject to hacking and things like that. So, that could happen probably within a week or two.
And then what would the communication be? So, we used to have, for example, Liz receiving a packet of financials, so she would obviously know that those POs were, you know, looking for approval. Would there be a communication factor that says, this is the, we need you to log in, there is X amount of things looking for your approval, or some sort of system that the board members are aware that that's there?
Yeah, we would do that. Probably wouldn't do it unless we saw that nothing was happening. I would think if the board member went in once, you know, once a day, they would see anything that's been in there since the prior date, and they could do it themselves. We could send reminder emails. That would be easy enough to do.
So, there's nothing, right now, when you approve a PO, there's nothing that says there's, there are POs waiting for approval?
No, I just, I go into the requisition screen and to approve requisitions, I hit kind of refresh, and any, anything new that was input since the last time I was on that screen shows up, and I just go through them, and I can look at them. I can see the attachments, anything that was added to it, and it's all right there. Don't have to print anything out.
Wonderful. So, our next meeting is Monday at 2:00 also. Finance Committee has a lot of work to do.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Any other questions from any board members on finance? Okay. Oh, John, you're muted, I think, John. Still muted.
Now, this is, this is all new for us. Now, are we, we as a board, do we approve it? Do you take a vote on it, or how is that working for us? Are we, approve these changes in the procedures?
It's not, you're not changing anything in terms of the policy. So, the policy has already had a set threshold. So, it's only going back, because you put that parameter into place for, from when you started doing the lower number, and we're looking at every single PO, all you're doing is reverting back to the policy, and not even reverting back to the full policy, but you're just setting a measure that you're going to look at anything that's over $1,000.
So, that's really how, how the approval is. So, in the policy that says it gets transmitted in paper or electronically to the board member to approve, because the board member has to approve it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to our Finance Committee. No other questions, then we'll move on to our Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Barry is going to give us that report.
Yes. We met the Curriculum and Instruction Committee on July 9th at 11:00 a.m., and Mrs. Farizani and myself sit on that committee. Dr. Pelletieri, Mr. Chang, and Mr. Anderson were present. And the item that we discussed on July 9th was the tech project, Tech 30, which is an item for action by the board tonight. To summarize, this is the Bosi Project that we had broken up into two parts, if you remember from a couple of meetings ago. This is the second part that is allowing us, or we're proposing, to switch over to Chromebooks for all students in grades nine through 12. It is the Chromebook rollout. Our goal is to ultimately mirror the past iPad purchasing model, which was two grades per year. But initially, we will be purchasing or proposing to purchase grades nine through 12. The following year, it would be grades seven, eight, and nine. And then, the following year, it would be go back again to two grades, which would be grades five and nine. After the initial investments for the two years, we are back in the position to purchase the two grades of devices as we have been in years past, but instead of iPads, it will be Chromebooks. So, just to kind of summarize, year one, hopefully this summer, if we get approval, and we can kind of expedite the process, we're at the mercy of, if we do approve the item for action, the delivery and, you know, the setup of the equipment and whatnot from Bosi's. So, for year one, we'll purchase the Chromebooks for grades nine through 12. No iPads will be purchased. We will provide ongoing professional development to support our teachers and, if need be, students. In grades six through eight, they would keep iPads that they have currently. In grade five, they would get the one-year-old iPads from the grade nine high school students. The following year, in '21, '22, we will purchase three grades total, grades seven, eight, and nine. They will take out the outgoing 12th graders' Chromebooks, which would be one-year-old at that point, and give them to grade six. Grade nine for use throughout high school. One-to-one Chromebooks in grades six through 12 at that point. And then, year three, which would be '22, '23, we would go back to purchasing the two additional grades, so grades five and nine, and then that would put us back onto the two-year purchasing cycle. We would replenish Chromebooks as needed for repair, borrowing, et cetera. As I mentioned, if we approve tonight, then the goal is hopefully to get this moving forward as quickly as we can. Chromebooks are now cheaper than iPads with the cases. We had put the keyboards, as you know, with our iPads for our students. So, the cost of an iPad is $393.95. The cost of a Chromebook, $355.85. So, as I mentioned upfront, it's, it's an initial investment. But, you know, ultimately, our goal, as we, as a board, have mentioned in previous sessions repeatedly, we wanted to see the high school with something other than iPads, setting them up for what's going to, life was going to be more indicative of what their college experience is going to be like. So, it is our recommendation of this committee to approve this project if anybody has any questions at this time.
Thank you. That was a great report. Any questions from any board members? I know we had talked on Phase One, and this was kind of Part B of our contract. So, we had talked a little bit about it. I know some things had changed from one iteration to the other, but I think we're really happy with where we're evolving to. This is exactly as Kelly mentioned, what the, the goal of the board was. Thank you, Dr. Pelletieri, for all your work, and Mr. Mike Anderson for helping us get here, and Mr. Chang for helping move this along. So, if there's no questions from the board, then we'll, we have this up for approval later for a vote later on in the agenda.
I should have had Mrs. Barry ask the first time. Would have went through then. Did a great job.
Yes, you did. Thank you. Our next meeting is July 22nd at 10:15 a.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, the next committee report is from the Policy Committee, and I'll cover that for Mrs. Dion and myself. Both attended that meeting. Our anchor of that meeting is Mrs. Wong, who is our district clerk. Our anchor of that meeting is Mrs. Wong, who is our district clerk. And Mr. Chang, of course, sat in with us as well. So we are, as a policy committee, will be the four of us, and we will be inviting in members of our administration that have some stake or information or knowledge about policies that are coming up. So Mrs. Wong gets policies through Erie One BOSIs that are recommended to school districts that they amend, revise, replace, or any sort of guidance that comes through Erie One BOSIs. So now we'll have a committee where we can have Mrs. Wong raise those policies, we can take a view of them, and again, like I mentioned, invite people in who have some knowledge about some of the current existing policies and some of the policies going forward. So our guests for the meeting yesterday were Dr. Pelletieri, Dr. Leahy, and Mr. Mike Anderson. Thank you for joining us. What really is happening is that our current policy, which is 7243, it's the student privacy, parental access to information, and administration of certain physical examinations to minors, has been recommended by Erie One BOSIs to be replaced with a new policy, 5676, and it's entitled Privacy and Security for Student Data and Teacher and Principal Data. So the committee kind of looked through the wording of the new policy. And really essentially, what we decided to do was to take a much closer look at the replacement that Erie One BOSIs is suggesting and making sure that all of the information in our old policy would still be carried over through the new policy. So if there were portions of the old policy that would be being left out by the replacement, that we find a way to make sure that that's captured in maybe another existing policy or that we create a new policy that covers some of that information. So we carefully reviewed those, talked through some different points. One clear addition in the new policy is the designation of a data protection officer. And the district will be naming Mike Anderson, our director of IT, as this person. A section of the old policy that we asked to ensure is either included in a new version or another existing policy was in regards to physical examinations and screenings. And Dr. Leahy was going to help cross-reference some policies and take a look and make sure that was covered in others. Our next meeting would be on Monday, July 27th. And we did set our meetings for the remainder of the year. If any board members have any questions about, I know we're not giving specific information yet, but any new policies that need to go through the board and come to a meeting, we'll start with the policy committee and then be brought to the board as a whole for future meetings. So that's how that policy committee is going to work. Any questions from any board members? All right, thank you. And our last committee report is for topics related to pupil personnel services, social emotional learning, mental health, and student services. And I'm sorry, who is giving this report? Is it Mrs. Barry again, or? It's you, John, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure who was doing this one.
Christine said, because I was in the car. But I have notes if she doesn't.
Okay. Thank you, John. We'll let you cover some of the meetings that you were attending.
Christine, you're muted.
I, I'm sorry, that was a miscommunication. I didn't know that I was reporting on this at all.
Okay, I, I mean, I wrote down what I could in the car, so I can do it if you want.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It was really more of a scheduling meeting for us. It was our first meeting. We scheduled all our meetings. Our next meeting is Thursday, August 20th at 2:00 PM. We went through the whole calendar to schedule our meetings. What do we, we're going to, we're going to look at special ed enrollment, IEPs, and the programs in general. We talked about the survey that was sent out to, to the, to the families in Rockford Center. We, we thought to maybe give a summary of the survey to the public. I believe that's what we talked about. We, we spoke about a registration, you know, in the future will go to be online. It's not, not ready to go there yet, but it's recommended that we have a presentation in public at the September 10th meeting, as our, you know, public meeting. And just to present the, the concept and the idea and hopefully move it forward for the next school year. I think that, that was our goal, Noreen, right?
You're muted, Noreen.
Muted.
Noreen, you're muted.
Let me see if I could unmute. There you go.
The online registration is actually going to start in this school year, Mr. O'Shea, but the, the parent update of demographic information will be required in the following school year.
Okay. So we're, we're beginning it, but it will be in full, in the next school year for us. August 10th through 20th is the screening for special ed. The summer, I have the summer program, special ed, July 27th, it starts live.
August 10th to August 20th was a kindergarten screening.
Right, okay.
Is also live.
For the summer remote program we talked about, we have 475 enrolled. We, we did speak about enrollment in our schools and we will, that's part of our, that will be part of our discussion as we move through the summer to, you know, to plan for, you know, class sizes and such. And that's all I have. I'm sorry, it was very brief. I didn't take great notes.
No, you hit, you hit on all the, all the major points there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll definitely be more thorough when I know it's my turn.
Don't worry. I'll be on the hot seat, not you.
Well, I'll take turns.
Okay.
Noreen, last time at the meeting, you had mentioned some of the courses that you were offering at the high school level were maybe lagging a little bit in enrollment. And I know you had a lot of enrollment in the other areas. Did that ever pick up? And could you give us an update on those courses?
Yes, of course. The, unfortunately, the high school academic seminars are really still lagging behind. There's a couple of courses that are, have a pretty decent substantial enrollment, I would say, a couple of the math classes. But we really were a little disappointed that, that more students were not taking the opportunity to get into some really small intimate settings to talk about, to bolster some skills to get them ready for subsequent coursework in September. But the registration is, is open for a short time longer. And if there's still interest after somebody takes a look and it's closed, they could always call Mr. Zapia, who's the coordinator of the high school program, or Mr. Eckert, the summer program principal, or myself. I'd be happy to get them in. Unfortunately, at some point and very soon, we're going to have to tell the teachers whether or not the, the courses collapse and close, the sections close. So the sooner the better. But it's really a great opportunity to bolster skills. There's also a few more seats available in, for the younger students in the academic skill building class. It's a really fabulous reading teacher that's doing some reading fundamental workshops that are really small and, you know, just great opportunities to help the kids that feel like they, they need a little bit of skill bolstering before the, the opening in September. So they're there for the taking and hopefully we'll get a few more people. In terms of the enrichment program, there's 475 seats filled, which is pretty good considering it's still a remote program. So we're pretty happy about that.
That's great. Thank you so much. Great job with that.
Mr. Chair, Madam President, if I, if I may, I just want to recognize Noreen for all her efforts. I know even when I was transitioning, she was sending me over a lot of those files in terms of her coordination of the maybes, the what-ifs. This is what we will run, how we would run it. Especially when the, you know, game changed on her on a dime, she was able to pivot and look at and be able to grab a lot of teachers to, who would want to come in and, and service our, our students live for our special ed programming. So I just want to recognize her for her efforts because we're seeing it come to life now. And, you know, I just, I think that's, that's all worth commending.
We agree. Thank you so much for all your work and for your, I know, Mr. Zapia and Mr. Eckert as well, everybody's working on the summer programs. Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other questions from board members for Mr. O'Shea or Mrs. Farisani? Yeah, John, in the beginning of your comments, you made reference to the survey and sharing the survey results with parents. Is there a specific plan or timeframe for that?
We, we spoke of sharing a survey summary, not the specific survey, just to give a, you know, an outline. We did not actually set a timetable to doing that.
Mr. Chang or Dr. Leahy, did you want to add anything about the survey results?
Yeah, Noreen, could, could you just give a, give us like a sneak preview and then we could set up a, a time where we might be able to report that out? But just kind of give us, because I know you did, I thought you did a great job summarizing and encapsulating a lot of the information. Just could you give us a couple of like highlight bullet points?
Of course. The, we took a look at the, the responses and tried to look at it both at like an objective kind of quantitative analysis and also a qualitative review of the open-ended questions. And just like we really want to see, we did, we were able to translate that data and much of the qualitative review, meaning the, the open-ended responses that parents gave bore out in, you know, the effectiveness ratings of each of the modalities. And we found out which of the modalities we use more often than others, which of the modalities, meaning, you know, email, student feedback, face-to-face instruction, live instruction, use of Seesaw, Google Classroom, pre-recorded videos. We looked at all of those and we saw which ones were more effective than others in each of the grade levels in each of the schools. So it was somewhat telling. I think the overwhelming response of parents was that, you know, they really wanted to see a little bit more of a, of a, a schedule in the presentations of instruction and learning. More live instruction came out loud and clear. And there was a, we kind of went through and said, there's about, I would say, almost half, somewhere in the 40, 40 to 45% of parents were either, you know, positive or about the, about the program that was, the remote learning program that we presented. And about 60% expressed, you know, somewhat frustration with the pandemic and being in remote learning or, or specific issues with the way that their, their children learn in a remote learning environment. I think the survey was, was really helpful in advising a lot of the decisions that are being made right now for the reopening. Because some of the, the themes came out kind of really loud and clear, so we were able to really focus on those in the reopening planning. There's a, there's a report about analysis for, you know, that, that Mr. O'Shea referred to and I'd be happy to share that with the board, of course, and we can present at a future meeting if you like.
Thank you. Thank you. And most importantly, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said that it's about the data being used, not just collected. So now we have that to use in terms of our reentry plans and formation of all of those scenarios that Mr. Chang reported to the public today. So that's really an important piece of it. So thank you for doing the survey and that's a great recap so everybody understands all what we collected. So thank you. Any other questions for any of the committee reports related to what Mr. O'Shea reported Okay. Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a special guest, our athletic director, Carol Rosetto, joining us. We're in stage two of a policy and a form that's associated with the policy. Before we go to that, Mr. Chang, if you wouldn't mind, could you give us an update on the athletic season? I know today we had just gotten new guidance. Always a couple of hours before a board meeting, we get some sort of new information. I think it's definitely worth sharing to the public at this point in time and just kind of maybe give the public an indication of how we're rolling out some things pertaining to athletics from here to the start of school.
Yeah, certainly. This week has been like, you could say it was probably like being in a draft room and people constantly texting you back and forth. I know that there was information coming fast and furious about the guidance being left out, I mean, being released to us. You know, our, our New York State Association was sending out information about articles, about things that were going on. It was the same for athletics as well. Carol, and I could let Carol speak to this a little bit more, but we got information if we were to open, the, the season would start, starting September 21st. So with that news, I mean, kind of puts us in, in a position to, again, start looking at how we could start crafting our plans. And I'm sure that's going to be part of. Carol also anchors the reopening committee for co-curricular, along with Brian, who are, and they'll, they'll be talking about this and what that might look like in terms of filling our, our fields and our kids and how, how do we get them back? So there's going to be a lot of those questions that are being asked there as well. But there was a definitive date given in terms of the 21st. If we were to come back, that the seasons would all commence on the 21st of September.
Just want to add to that, that that is high school sports only. Modified there, middle school, there is no tentative start date. And the September 21st date is, can be moved at any time. So at the college, we'll start on, on September 21st.
Yeah. So that, that also means that, you know, with everything that's going on, I know our athletes are all looking to get on the field and everything else. And I know I've coached, that our, our kids are eager to, our coaches. But we'll have, you know, time to be able to figure those things out and then be able to get them on the field. But at the same time, again, I just want to reiterate, while we're under this executive order, there are no organized practices, whether they be sanctioned or unsanctioned. None of that should be happening. I know that messaging went out this week as well, but we'll reiterate that through the athletic department and the athletic office as well throughout this week.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for board members about that guidance that came out today before we move on to the policy? We have Mrs. Rosetto with us.
So Carol, that's just, that's kind of every, the start of preseason almost, right? If, if it were to happen on the 21st, there's nothing pre to that. So the season isn't going to actually start. They have their, their, you know, they have to have X amount of practices before they actually start. From that date forward is when it will start.
Correct. So technically speaking, the first day of the season is the first day you're permitted on the field. And then your required practices start after that. So if it starts on the 21st, that's day one. Prior to that, there's nothing permitted as of now.
Thank you.
And you'll use September 21st as kind of your jump point to work backwards from in terms of when you might need physicals or concussion testing or anything like that. So if that date sticks, a, a couple of weeks before, parents will get guidance on what they would need to do to have their children be eligible for that season, starting late September then.
My recommendation would be, if you have the opportunity and you're comfortable to get your child the physical that they would need to participate under normal circumstances, I would say go ahead and do that and submit the paperwork because you'll be ahead of the game, whatever the start is. In terms of concussion testing, we will definitely offer it as soon as we're permitted to do so, we'll offer it like we would normally do in May and June, that we didn't have an opportunity to do that. We'll offer it again at the middle school level and at the high school level as soon as we get the go-ahead. So the kids from our end will be good. But again, if the parents are comfortable at any time between now and September, get that physical in, get it submitted to Tara Algeriavento so she can process it and that ready slip is ready to go, barring any new things we have to sign.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no other questions, then we'll move on to the policy. So again, just to reiterate, thank you very much. This was also work of a policy, I'm sorry, of a committee that we had formed in the late winter. And that was anchored by myself and Carol Rosetto. We were the co-chairs of that committee together. Was made up of two board members, two administrators, booster club presidents, four coaches, and four members of our community. And we had a very good experience working together. The work of the policy that's being put forward is at 100% consensus of that policy, of, I'm sorry, of that committee. So everybody was in agreement after those committee meetings as to the direction that the policy should go to. So what we had really done was, just again, to take a step back, was take an existing policy and break it out by tutoring, by music, and by coaching, because that made the language a little bit more clear. It didn't necessarily change some of the allowances of the policy, but tightened things up and made for more administrative work that would need to be required to be able to do some of these services. And we tried to make those equal among tutoring, music, and coaching. So we are in stage two of that policy right now with the, the season being put off a little bit. I'm happy to know that we at least had a little bit more time to talk about this. And, and I'm, again, happy to have Carol join us so we can start to work through some of the suggested changes that had come. So at the last meeting, there was a question about what the school year would be defined as in terms of the tutoring and music portion. In this version of it, we had clarified that and just pointed out that the school year was defined as July 1st through June 30th. So those were additions that were added under tutoring and under music. And then under coaching, a question mark had come up about any person who had possibly owned something related to sports and how they fit into this policy. And we had added them in under number one, that that would be more of a reporting expectation to the athletic director and getting approval through the superintendent of schools. So that whatever possible connection they may have to an age-eligible Rockville Center student would be reported. So that was a change that was made in this last version. And before we move on to the form, we'll just kind of focus in on the particular policies. So I'm going to open it up to board members for any questions or comments while we're in stage two.
In terms of the section on coaching, it, the paragraph number one, where you're filling out a form to speak of any conflict of interest. I think it doesn't change the conflict of interest problems that we encountered that brought us to this point. If you are coaching an AAU team, a travel team that is filled with Rockville Center eligible children that are the age of those that are going to be trying out for your team, and you're then coaching the team for the school, there's an inherent conflict of interest there. And this policy, while you're reporting it, doesn't change that fact. You can let it be known that you have six, seven, eight, nine girls, boys, whatever the case may be, on your travel team that are also now trying out for the Rockville Center team. And in addition, it's not just for the tryout process, but it goes further. When you have a season and you have a coach making decisions about playtime, who's going to be the MVP, who are going to be the captains, all of those decisions affect the players on the team. And if there's a conflict because the coach is coaching sometimes the majority of children on the team as a private coach, where he's getting paid or she's getting paid, and doing the same thing then for Rockville Center, this policy is not addressing that conflict. And that was a huge part of how we ended up here.
I just want to clarify that it is not the opinion of every person that there was a conflict of interest found. I think part of the reason we ended up looking at the policy again was more of the administrative reporting that needed to happen here, because the existing policy, the way it was, and Carol, you can jump in on here, it was not about a conflict of interest that existed. It was about the reporting that was expected to happen under the guise of that policy and was not fulfilled. So we tried to make the language a little stronger, make sure it was going through approval process and make sure that there would be alternative selection processes put in place. We've had coaches for years working and outside in, you know, athletic teams or other things. And when we really vetted this through the committee, we went through every possible scenario through coaches and community members of how coaches may work outside of the school district, similarly to how teachers and music professionals work outside of the school district as well. And that's happened for so many years. It's a part of the culture of our district. That's really not where we found an inherent problem and the committee agreed that that was not an issue for the committee, but was more about making sure that things are reported properly. And then the athletic director and superintendent needing that approval process in place and also having the look on it to decide if an alternative selection process should be happening. So that was really the, I'm just giving you the kind of ideas of the committee as a whole. We really went through this line by line and thought about what coaches might be working in a summer camp, what coaches might be assigned to an AAU team or, and we kind of really spoke through every single one of these. So that really was not an issue for any member of that committee or to be found as an issue that was founded last year.
I do believe if you watch the prior board meetings and you listen to the comments of the people when they got up and spoke about what was going on, that that is not an accurate statement about everybody's opinion. Maybe it's whoever is on this committee and the committee was formed by, I don't know, you as the president and I don't know who's on that committee or who was chosen for that committee or how that selection process happened. But when people spoke at the last meeting that was public that I attended and people had the opportunity to get up to the mic and speak to this policy, people spoke about it being the exception and not the rule that there was a need to fill out this form and say there's a conflict. It was not when you had six, seven, eight, nine kids repeated on an outside team and an inside team. Anyone who is then not on that person's travel team is at a disadvantage. They know it going into tryouts. And for the rest of the season, you have a person making a decision about play and continuing to make decisions, much like with the music, about awards. Who's going to be the MVP? Who's going to be, and if those children are playing on both teams, there is a conflict there.
Again, I'm going to let Carol jump in as well. And I did not personally choose people on a committee, so let's just be clear of how committees are formed. We had people apply, we had people asked to join, we had a balanced committee. People that were sitting on various sides of this issue, sitting on this committee, which was a very balanced group. So there should be no, you know, miscommunication about who was on that committee. The board was clearly involved in all of that. But we, again, as a board, had not found that that in itself was a conflict. So the committee also, like I said, went through every single scenario that a coach may be in. And we, as a district, have always put high integrity on our coaches. We have expectations of them. We want to employ our own teachers in coaching positions. We want our teachers to have opportunities to earn money outside of their coaching positions, their tutoring opportunities. We're a district and a culture that's always supported our teachers that way and have decided not to change the wording of the policy to take away those opportunities, but to make sure we have systems in place that better reporting happens and it gives our superintendent an opportunity to approve those things before they're able to happen in terms of if a coach is going to be appointed, that at least the superintendent, before they put them on a personnel report, understands all of the things that they're involved in. And that's why that reporting is important. So that was the communication that happened in committee. Carol, let you jump in as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll address playing time. Playing time is based on opponents and based on skill and based on positions needed and based on attitude and injuries and everything else. So regardless of prior knowledge of the person, when you're within the season, playing time comes down to day-to-day, game-to-game. Sometimes the starters are just not having a good day, they get pulled, somebody else goes in. So that's how playing time is chosen on any given day. In terms of awards, county awards, names are brought to the county coaches and then the county coaches vote. And that's how county-level awards, you know, all-conference, all-divisional, whatever, they're voted on by the coaches in the conference or the county. And most teams, not all, but most teams, the team awards are voted on by their own players, you know, by their teammates. So that's how those two things work most of the time.
And number, how do we distinct, why do we make a difference if you're training somebody or coaching somebody?
Which, in which one, John, the little header before number one versus one, is that what you're asking?
Right, no coach, no coach at all, no coach shall coach, can't even speak. No coach can be involved with training somebody, but the coach can be involved in coaching them. How did you come to those, that distinction?
So some of the scenarios we talked through, and the one that goes in the header is about, so let's take the scenario of if you were coaching a sport and you kind of just directly went to a group of students that you knew in town and tried to get them to give you, say, a fee per hour to have them train you on the side. That we were prohibiting completely. We were not having people be able to go after students or in private settings or semi-private settings and try to allure students in or athletes in to be training them privately. So that was really what that header was. It's an absolute no, it's not allowed, we don't allow it. Then we talked through the scenario with the coaches and the people on the committee about if people are working for outside teams, and we put some of the scenarios in here and then we just recently added the owning. But if they were assigned to teams or students that may be somewhere along the way trying out for something within the district, that's where we wanted the reporting. So that was not as strong of a no for us, but more we need to know about it, we want to know about it. We want the superintendent's approval on this. So that was the distinction we made between kind of the header and number one. Further down, we start getting into camps as well. We talked through that scenario separately with the coaches. And again, the four coaches that were on the committee represented, had been coaches for years, really. I mean, these were not new coaches. So they were bringing to the table how they were representing the coaches as a whole of all of these different scenarios, because either they had personally been impacted by it in the past or have been working with coaches that have fallen into some of these categories. So I found that really helpful for us to kind of break down all of these different scenarios and decide how we needed to report them out.
So there's been a lot said about the teachers and coaches and how we want them to be able to have opportunities to earn money, and I don't disagree with that at all. I think that if you are applying to coach in Rockville Center and the taxpayers are paying money for you to coach, that you should be able to be impartial and fair in your decision-making and in your choice of who makes a team. And what we haven't addressed is the children that are involved here. And what has gone on and what we talked about over the last year at many board meetings and letters were written with regard to how having a coach that's coaching both an outside team and an inside team affects the children and the tryout process and their day-to-day existence on a team. And in addition to that, how it affected the entire integrity of our program in terms of people coming to try out, the reduced numbers of people who are trying out for certain sports that had this issue involved with it, and the numbers that were different in years past. When people were trying out, there were much more people trying out for these sports. We couldn't even field a JV team last year. There are widespread facts to this conduct that have hurt the program in general. And I guess we're not addressing that and we're not addressing the kids. We're just going to worry about whether or not people have opportunity to make money.
I don't think that that's, I think that that's your opinion about how you read the policy. I don't think that's the intention whatsoever. And I think that by having eyes on this and having that alternative selection process in place, that's a way to keep the integrity of the program. And I think we need to make a blanket statement here that we should not be looking at any policy we have as a way to find wrongdoing where it doesn't exist and look for reasons to hurt people that are doing good for our community. So we have to look at it from another lens. We're not looking to create a policy to hurt anybody, whether it's a student, a coach, anybody, a teacher. The policies are not written for any intention to hurt anybody. In fact, really the opposite, ways for us to make sure that there is integrity. But we do have trust in our teachers, we do have trust in our coaches. And the policy has never been a problem. It's the execution of the policy that really was more of a problem. And I think that we've all learned a lesson here. And everybody's in agreement that by tightening some language and making sure that we execute the process better, that we should not run into any problems because we haven't had any in the past. So I think that was where, again, sharing not a personal opinion, but the opinion of the committee. And I know Carol, again, you're here, so I'm not speaking as an individual right now. I'm speaking as recapping conversation that came out of the work of that committee, which did, again, have a full consensus on this.
Great. And just to address the numbers, based on all of the outside travel teams and AAU teams and everything else, enrollment in New York State high school athletics has declined and has been declining over the last number of years across the board because of the academy teams, et cetera, and so on. So it's not just a Rockville Center thing, it's an all-over thing.
Well, if you look at your numbers for the soccer program for both girls and boys, the boys' soccer program does not have the decrease in tryouts and was able to field both a full roster and a JV and the girls was not.
Girls' sports across the board have been very low each season.
I've had some concerns from public that they haven't had an opportunity to speak on this at all, as we've talked about it now two times in a public works. So I really think we need to spend a little bit of time with the public to get opinions and viewpoints that way before we go too much further with it.
But we did open it up to the public to write in to us to have any questions that we could address. Jackie, did we get any?
No, sorry, I just checked, there are no questions about the policy.
Okay, so we did open that up to the public the last time. We made it clear that that was an opportunity, we didn't receive any. We'll open that opportunity up again to the public. You know, this is why policies go through stages, so that we have those opportunities. And I would encourage anybody that has any opinions about the topic or the policy as a whole to write to us. We would be, we'll look to, I recommend that we would move it forward because we are hoping to get this policy in place before a season does start. And we are looking at some point to, I think, approve coaches for the future. So it would be great to have the policy in place before we do that, so that everything is, we're all on the same page. So are there any other questions about specific language about the policy from board members?
I don't have a question about specific language, but knowing that there's a process here, even if we move this to stage three, then there's at least two more meetings. Carol, are your coaches aware of the new policy and are we sort of operating underneath it at the current time?
Yes and yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And just so you know, moving forward, based on what happened last year, I changed the application process. So part of the application process will now include this policy and a signature stating already within this policy. But because we send out, I send out coaching postings in, say, May or June for the entire year, I will again, before each season and before I recommend any coaches, I will again send out to anybody that was interested in coaching for the fall, for the winter, for the spring, I'll send out this policy and say, read this policy, again, acknowledge that you are within this policy. Do you need to let me know anything? So this way, before it ever goes to my recommendations to Mr. Chang, we will have confirmation that everybody's within the policy. So I have like a kind of a double backup now. So they have to sign off it on their application and then they have to sign off on it before I recommend the coaching for each season.
Any other questions about the policy? Okay, then we'll move on to looking at the form, which also goes over to the policy. So basically, the form mirrors what we're asking for from the policy. So I don't believe that there were big changes, Jackie, to this one, correct, to the form? We didn't really make any changes to this one?
No, there were no changes. There was one grammatical change, but that was it.
Right, okay. So again, what we had done with the form was break it out between, or among, the tutoring portion, music and coaching separately. You'll notice that the coaching one is slightly more involved because of the actual policy being a little bit more involved and breaking down some of those scenarios. So if there's any questions from board members who will perform, you can raise them now.
In the tutoring, in the coaching, we have must be approved in the tutoring. I don't. There's no, nothing that says it has to be approved before you tutor. It's just, you're making a statement, not getting approval from the superintendent or anybody.
You're requesting permission.
Right, it also does go to the superintendent.
I know, but it doesn't say you must be approved. When we talk about coaching, it says must notify and be approved by must notify and be approved by the district athletic director and the superintendent. We have nothing, no wording like that in the tutoring or the music.
In, are you talking about in the policy, John, or on the form?
On the form.
Oh, okay, because on the policy it does.
I thought we were talking about the forms.
We are, but I just, I'm saying that the policy requires people to be approved by the superintendent and that's in the policy and then the form just is what they have to fill out to get that approval.
No, but if we say it, if we say it on the athletic one, we should say it on the tutoring and the music one also. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, it's easy enough to add. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so I'd like to recommend that we move this forward to stage three so we'll have another opportunity to speak about it. Again, trying to come to closure on it before the start of the sports season. So are there any objections?
As long as I, as long as we have a public meeting and there is room and time for public comment on the matter, I think that's okay.
Yeah, and again, I echo, you know, that we offer for anybody that wants to write in about the policy, any questions that they want answered. With any luck, we'll be in person soon, but if not, then we would read those questions and answer them at the next meeting. So we did have to make a change to the next meeting for a calendar reason. So a good time to mention right now that we have moved our next meeting from August 6th to August 12th. And we will let you know where that meeting will be held, whether it will be in person or virtual. We're looking at the guidance that we get and we'll be able to plan going forward for the August 12th meeting. So we'll have this go to stage three at that meeting and we'll go from there. Okay, so since there's no other questions, we're going to move on with the rest of the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the reorg meeting July 1st and the public work session on July 1st?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed? We have a warrant, we have a treasures report and a corrective action plan?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve receipt of financial reports as listed?
Still moved.
A second? Any questions?
I actually have a question. Can we, on the claims audit, do we have a different claims auditor?
No.
Okay. Same, okay, handwriting was different. I didn't, there was something different there. Okay, just checking.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve Board Actions A through F? A second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? So just again to point out that the BOSI's approval will be among here that Kelly Berry mentioned to us. So we're so happy to see that go forward. I'll take a vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we will be adjourning the meeting. And again, the next meeting will be August 12th. So we will update the public on where that will be. Up until then, you will hear from us weekly as Mr. Cheng reported. And we also look forward to having our forum on July 29th, which will be about our re-entry plans. So please check your email and send in your questions via the PTA so that we could answer all of your questions and make sure that the best information is put out there. So we appreciate you participating in that and we hope you're well and we hope to see you soon. Thank you so much. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Bye.